Pasco School Board of Directors. This afternoon, we are focusing on multi-tiered systems of support, or by its acronym, MTSS. This is a subject that is near and dear to my heart, not only because it's the focus of our superintendent evaluation or strategic goals, but also because it's my job. At my job at middle school, I teach a tier-two class for support, which is one of the things that we talked about today, like in small group intervention. And so, in looking over this packet, I am really excited for everyone to see all of the amazing tier-one supports that we already have in place at our schools. I'm so excited to hear about our MTSS handbook that is being drafted. I was just in a meeting yesterday, and we were talking about how in the school district where I work, like, we really need to have something that's district-wide, so that everyone has a guide to look back to, like, what are the foundations that we can build, so that everyone is providing the same systems of support to our kids and with what's proven. And if you need support, you can reach out to another school or another teacher. And so, anyway, that's my preamble to this study session. And so Superintendent Whitney will be leading us, and I will let her take it away.
Thank you. So, good afternoon, board members. It is my pleasure to be here this evening, or this afternoon, to talk about multi-tiered systems of support. I'm going to do really just a quick introduction, and then I'm going to hand the rest of the presentation over to Assistant Superintendent Lobos, who really is leading this effort, and I'm certainly proud of the work that she and her team are doing. But I wanted to create some context for the why behind this particular presentation. So, the superintendent evaluation is governed by District Policy 1630. And within that policy, it requires that the board identify what are called annual objectives. This year, you went through a process of identifying those annual objectives, and the areas that you focused on heavily focus on our multi-tiered system of support, or you'll more frequently hear us refer to it as MTSS. So, really fundamental to the why of this is to provide the board with a foundational understanding and really a common language around this framework, because your focus of this in the annual objectives then determines what we bring to you as part of the board progress monitoring reports, and also board reports and updates. And so, it is very technical. This is the work of educating kids. And so, we need to make sure that we have a common language and common understanding about that. So, this is probably the most technical study session that you have seen to this to date, and I just really wanted to be clear about the why behind that. So, this is really just a reminder of the annual objectives that you chose. So, you chose annual objectives under mastery of reading that focus on both core instruction and acceleration. Core instruction is implementation of instruction aligned to our state learning standards. And for literacy or for reading, we focus on foundational K-2 skills, and we're implementing K-5 American Reading Core ARC with fidelity, and then implementing of, or implementation of new English Language Arts, or ELA curriculum materials in grades six through 10. For acceleration, we focus on identifying needs of, identifying needs early and accelerating learning through targeted intervention. And the focus that you identified under that particular item was to standardize and implement an MTSS with fidelity district-wide, and clearly articulate an MTSS framework in partnership with UW Smart Center under the Last Mile Project. And you'll hear Carla talk about that very specifically tonight. And then, offer professional development focused on the appropriate use of data for progress monitoring. And Carla will absolutely highlight what that means tonight in her presentation. Under success for algebra, again, we have core instruction. And under this one, we're focusing on implementation of new curriculum materials in grades six through eight, algebra classes one through four, and geometry, again, with fidelity. And then, under acceleration intervention, it still, it's that clearly articulated framework and professional development around data usage. And then, our on-track for graduation, again, under core instruction, it's that implementation of our core curriculum materials with fidelity focused in both ELA and mathematics, and developing clearly articulated roadmaps for new core materials. You'll see examples of roadmaps in the MTSS framework or MTSS handbook that Carla will be sharing with you. And then, under acceleration, we want to be, acceleration intervention, we want to create an early warning system and interventions to help students get on and stay on track. And so, we're developing a system of proactive data analysis to identify incoming ninth graders that need targeted for intervention. So, the idea is we want to identify through habits that were set in middle school, students who are, who have already demonstrated the need for additional support, so they're not failing classes. We want kids to not have to fail first before we intervene. We want to identify them early in middle school so that we bring them in and focus on academics through leveraging the ignite-to- unite work that you heard. You had a study session on that. I think it was earlier this year, maybe in the summer. Raquel came, and there were some students who had helped present that. So, again, my purpose is really to ground this presentation in your board governance work, which is around evaluation of the superintendent, and try to draw some connections between what you'll hear Carla talk about and what you'll be hearing through our board progress monitoring reports, and then, at the end of the year, be evaluating or being used that information to evaluate the superintendent. So, with that, do you have any questions for me before I turn it over to Carla?
I have a question. When you keep using the word fidelity, what, is that the company name? Or does it mean that you're doing it well?
We're doing it systemically, that people across our system are implementing the same thing the same way. Okay, thank you. And I'll actually provide you with an example of what fidelity means when we get to the literacy roadmap. So, that is a great question. Please remind me you have that when I get to that point. So, this is a purpose and overview of the presentation, and these are just the ways that I'm going to go through. So, I'm going to talk to you, give you an overview. And some of this may be a review of some of the work that we've done before together of the Washington Multi-Tierred Systems of Support Framework. Then, I'm going to highlight the progress and timelines of the MTSS implementation in the district. I'm going to give you some academic and behavioral examples within that framework, some specific examples. Then, I'm going to give you information about data and progress monitoring as it relates and is embedded in that framework. Then, we're going to talk about the impacts of MTSS and the importance of MTSS and RTI within that, specifically under Special Education, SLD eligibility, and those changes in the law. And then, we're going to talk about the MTSS handbook, and I'll give you an opportunity, I'll preview that with you, and then, the link is also embedded in the presentation for you to review. The Washington MTSS framework is an ISS model, and ISS means Integrated Student Supports. It means that the framework is used to look at the whole child, not just one component. The whole child model includes health, behavior, emotional, and academic factors, and they're all recognized as important for children's development. Integrated Student Supports is consistent with models that acknowledge the unique ways in which child, family, school, and community level factors contribute to each student's academic success. It also recognizes that earlier educational experiences, including academics and non-academic school experiences, affect later accomplishments. The essential components of the MTSS, or multi-tiered systems of support, are interrelated. And as the intensity of student need increases, each of the components also increases in their intensity. Teams share the responsibility of making decisions in an MTSS framework, and these decisions are driven by high-quality data collected over time from multiple sources. Teams engage families, students, and community partners to plan, implement, and improve services. Staff and community partners provide a continuum of supports to students through a tiered delivery system, starting with strong core instruction. Staff use evidence-based practices to accelerate student learning through and across all tiers. When the MTSS framework is implemented with fidelity, and fidelity means with you implemented the way that was intended in all of the components, this prevention-based framework ensures that schools create the necessary conditions to systematically integrate academic and non-academic supports to meet the needs of the whole child. By integrating these supports, schools may increase the efficiency, effectiveness, and sustainability of all their services. At the beginning of this presentation, I shared with you the MTSS framework for Washington State. And this slide represents the components within that framework and how they're interrelated, and how they're interrelated throughout the system. So, this is just another graphic that represents that and how they rely on each other. So, why MTSS? Well, we know that students' needs are complex. Every child is different, and the needs are all interrelated. We also know that we cannot separate the social, emotional, and behavioral needs of students from their academic needs. We need to look at students through the lens of the whole child. So, for this reason, the supports and systems need to be coordinated and interrelated to provide the best supports for students. This is a great graphic of the tiered pyramid, and often, RTI and MTSS is depicted in a pyramid model. The reason I specifically, and we specifically selected this one is because often educators or community may think that if a student moves beyond the needs of tier-one, they move to the next bucket of tier-two, leaving behind the supports of tier-one. This is a common mistake or misconception in the implementation of the framework. Each tier should be added in addition to the support students are already receiving. So, instead of moving beyond layer-one or tier-one support, we're adding support to the existing core. This is the case for both academic and behavioral supports for students. Integrated Supports, or ISS, again, speaks to the importance of looking at the needs of the whole child and not focusing on one single component. ISS, or Integrated Student Supports, is also a lab requirement. For this reason, lab funding and system support should be integrated in this manner. And again, just remember that graphic representative how all those components are interrelated. This is a visual of how both behavioral and academic supports are integrated in the MTSS framework. Both effective behavioral supports and school-wide behavior supports feed into PBIS, Positive Behavioral Supports and Interventions for Students. In addition, it also demonstrates how RTI, or Students' Response to Intervention, feeds into the MTSS framework and systems of support for academics with both SEL, or Social Emotional Learning, and academic supports integrated under the umbrella of MTSS. So, again, another graphic showing how the layered supports in both academics, and you can see academics on one side, and behavior supports on the other are integrated in the MTSS system. This graphic, again, demonstrates how the layered supports are in addition to and not instead of. So, now, we're going to talk about, and I'm going to share with you, our progress at the school district and timelines of MTSS implementation. And some of this may be a little bit of review from some of the presentations I've provided to the board in the past. I had the opportunity to be in front of you throughout the last couple of years, and some of this may be a review where we've been and the work from, up to this point in time. So, we began this journey with an audit of our systems, and from there, we received recommendations in the following areas to implement an effective MTSS framework. The ones that were recommended that we focused on first were universal screening, progress monitoring, database decision-making, infrastructure, and support mechanisms. And again, that was February in 28, 29 of 2025. From that work, we entered at a collaboration with OSPI and the University of Washington Goodland Center, who provided targeted support in our MTSS journey. Part of this work is in the development of an MTSS handbook that I will share with you towards the end of our presentation. So, the University of Washington, the Goodland Center, has supported us in the academic side of that rubric, and the University of Washington Smart Center has supported us in the SEL, or Social Emotional Behavior Development, of the framework. This slide presents an overview of the Last Mile Project in partnership, Last Mile Project Participation and Assessment Rubric also is included in here. This is now at the bottom of here, and again, these are all the people that participated in the Last Mile Project. We actually just had a meeting last month with the Last Mile Consultants in the University of Washington, and these are some of the team participants. There's a link here onto the Last Mile RTI Implementation Rubric, and there's actually a copy in there for you of the full rubric for you to see. And again, all of those components are very similar, if not the same, components that were in the initial American Institute for Research audit, and you will see those also embedded in that rubric. But the entire rubric is in there for your review.
Assistant Superintendent Lobos, how did we get involved with the, what was the consultancy named?
So, it's actually a collaboration with the University of Washington Goodland Center and OSPI.
No, I know about the air audit in the previous slide. The Last Mile team. So, that's a team that was identified by you, and then, but we're working with the University of Washington as one of three school districts. How did we, how did we become one of three school districts participating?
We were invited to participate, and of course, we took that opportunity. Yeah. And so, the, these are recommendations of participants based on OSPI and the University of Washington. They're saying, these are the people that you need on the team that would be participating through this project with us.
Do you know how, like, why they selected us? How did we end up one of the three?
Actually, we had-
I know we're a big deal, but I was curious how they found out.
So, actually, we had several staff members that have participated in some projects through the state. Tracy Wilson and Alice Amaya were two. So, they had already participated. I don't think either of them are in the room through some state work. And so, they had already had some contacts in participating in some of this work. And so, they actually knew some of the people that then reached out and said, hey, you guys have been participating in statewide-level work on all of this. Would your district be interested? So, I think it was already participation on, from several staff members on the district's behalf and other committees and work around the state in this work, and therefore, they reached out to us. And yes, because, yeah, because we're a little bit of a big deal. So, this is one of the highlighted graphics in our MTSS handbook. And again, towards the end of this presentation, I'll take you through there, and the link is also in this presentation if you'd like to review. And this MTSS graphic, it depicts our MTSS framework in the Pasco School District. And as you can see, it aligns with the Washington State framework as both academics and social, emotional, and behavioral supports live under that umbrella. This is an example of our academic tiers in Pasco. Tier-one, which is the most robust, is proactive and preventative. Universal Tier-one instruction, also known as core instruction, is the academic and behavioral grade-level instruction that each student receives daily. For approximately 80 to 85% of students, universal, or tier-one instruction, will meet their academic, behavior, and social, emotional needs, and they will demonstrate proficiency and growth when best first instruction is delivered. The reason that this is so important is because if we're not reaching the majority of our students in tier-one instruction, we need to further examine our tier-one instructional supports. Universal Tier-one instructions and supports include applying high-quality teaching and supports for academics, behavior, and social, emotional wellness; implementing well-researched programs and best practices; planning flexible grouping and differentiation; and delivering integrated instruction and intervention that is designed to meet the needs of all learners. And there is a common misconception that there is no intervention in tier-one, but this is not the case. Students may need some intervention in the form of flexible grouping and differentiation, and this should be part of good core instruction that all students receive. Intensity and duration is what distinguishes tier-one and tier-two interventions, providing structures and systems for creating a positive school and classroom climate and ensuring cultural proficiency and inclusiveness. So, I'm going to give you an academic example, and I'm going to talk to you a little bit about what, I think the question, Dr. Norberg, that you had. What does fidelity mean? So, I'm going to provide you with an example of tier-one core instruction in literacy. And in collaboration with our teachers and principals, we've developed literacy roadmaps for get grades K through five using American Reading Company as our core reading materials. This work and development is vital to the consistency and implementation of tier-one instruction. It helps assure that students are receiving a guaranteed and viable curriculum and have access to high-quality instruction and grade-level standards. I'm going to click on the link and take you to the sample of a kindergarten roadmap, so you can see the importance of this work. Let's see. Do I click on?
I think the underlined text, maybe?
I think I already have it. I think I have it open already. Oops, that's the wrong one. So, this is an example, and this is the kindergarten, early literacy MTSS roadmap for kindergarten. And this is just for literacy instruction using American Reading Company. Now, the reason this is important is, so, for example, when we adopt a new core curriculum, this is the example for in elementary, it's American Reading Company. Teachers receive a teacher's guide, and then, you have teacher-student materials. The reason that the roadmap is important is that it shares and it tells teachers where the specific skills, where the specific standards live within the materials. So, in grades, kinder, for example, in first grade, there are some very important foundational pieces. And you can see there, for example, you see foundational skills and interactive read aloud, and you look at a lot of different things. We know, and even in the science of reading, phonics, word study, phonemic awareness, accuracy, automaticity, these are all very important skills in the development and as students learn to read. So, as you look through this and what the lesson design is and how teachers should be teaching American Reading Company, it really breaks up each of the components, from the morning message to the construction to core text, of where different things are embedded within the materials. So, when we talk about fidelity, or science lab, or writing, or the reading lab, it tells you where all those pieces and content is embedded within that structure of the materials. The reason that this is important, and we talk about fidelity of implementation, is sometimes educators can become overwhelmed. And I'm thinking, you know, elementary teachers are planning for ELA, writing, science, mathematics, right? They're planning for a lot of different contents. So, what this roadmap does, it provides them a really, well, a roadmap, that's why we call it that, for. So, if I'm a teacher, and I know that my foundational skills in kindergarten, phonemic awareness, for example, and accuracy and automaticity is really important as students are developing that, I know that these are pieces. If I'm missing, for example, the morning message, and that's where it's embedded, my kids might have gaps in their learning because I'm not implementing the curriculum with fidelity. That means all the components that kids are needing in order to assure that they're getting a robust, well-rounded education, right? And that we're not missing pieces. So, these roadmaps were developed, and again, to help and support teachers as they're implementing the materials to know where specific skills lie in the materials to make sure that we're not missing pieces, so kids have access to, again, clear learning targets, and all of the standards, and where some of the really high-leverage instructional skills are embedded within the components. So, this is kindergarten, and I'll just take you through it, so you can kind of see it. And then, again, it's all the different pieces of how we're monitoring, so you can see there formative assessment and progress monitoring, the use of the ERL and the NEIL to monitor that. And again, it's the use of the toolkits also to teach those interventions. And then, when we go to tier-two, or students that need additional support, and this is called out also, was in the tiers, and I know that it was small. You'll notice here that ARC toolkit components of tier-two, that it says two times a cycle for at-risk and three times a cycle for students that are at levels emergencies. So, one of the things when we're looking at the MTSS framework and you're looking at those tiered interventions, one of the things that should be happening for students, it isn't necessarily something completely different when you have something that's intervention or small group, but it's the intensity of their duration of what you're providing for students is what changes that tier-two. So, again, this is a very specific literacy roadmap using our core materials. It tells you where those specific skills and targets are in the component, so that teachers aren't missing pieces when they're using their core materials.
Are they implementing the tier-one, tier-two, and tier-three interventions? Are they doing those at the same time that they're doing tier-one? Or how do they time that out? Are you getting that?
Yes, so we'll talk about that. So, primarily, right now, we're focusing on tier-one and tier-two, and I'll talk a little bit about our work to be done around the areas of tier-three and what needs to happen for that to be in place. So, all students have access to. And part of tier-one is, you'll see on here, for example, ARC toolkit. Students in tier-one also receive toolkits, which is specialized instruction in small groups or one-on-one, depending on what their specific needs are, because every student is going to need something else to move on to the next instructional level for reading, kindergarten, first grade specifically, they're smaller chunks. Students that need more support, instead of maybe receiving a toolkit lesson, let's say, for example, once a week, I may be in a small group two to three times a week. So, the intensity and the duration of what I'm receiving may be different than a student that's on or above level in terms of the small group instruction. So, that's how that might change. So, this is an example of the roadmap. And we have actually completed, we began this work year-two of implementation, and that is pretty... Usually, when you're developing some kind of literacy roadmaps or curriculum guides specific to instructional materials, it does not happen in year-one, because year-one, what you want to do before you do any kind of curriculum alignments or roadmaps is you want teacher, allow teachers time to learn the materials, right? And then, after people have a chance to learn all the materials and implement, then you start refining and then calling out the specific pieces within the materials of where certain strategies and skills live.
Could you give us a little bit of an example of how this works in the classroom? So, you have tier-one, everybody's paying attention, and they're going through that. And all of a sudden, you need to do tier-two in small group. What's the rest of the class do when there's a small group going on?
So, some kids may be working on tier-one core instruction. Some kids may be reading. And so, you're pulling small groups. You may have multiple small groups going at the same time. So, it just depends on the structure of the classroom of what's happening and the grade level and how much students can sustain independently while the teacher's working with a small group.
What about advanced students that are not being challenged? What happens to them?
Well, we shouldn't have that. And the great thing about literacy is that we have books at all different levels. So, the intensity and the duration, and really, the way that RTI and MTSS is in place is every student, and the system is designed so that every student receives what they need. There is no reason that a student should sit in any classroom and should be, they should have books and access to reading material at their level, whether it's they're a struggling reader or they're an advanced reader. In addition to that, we also have highly capable students, and we have an identification system district-wide, and we have a very robust and very technical system of how we monitor students who are identified as highly capable. And we have two highly capable TOSs that go out and work with teachers if they are struggling or need additional support in differentiating instruction for highly capable learners.
That's been my question through this whole thing. Are highly capable learners considered tier-two and tier-three? Are those only your struggling learners?
So, usually, tier-two are for additional supports for kids that need, that are struggling to become level. It doesn't mean, though, that students aren't getting what they need if they're not behind. So, students should still be challenged. Their work should still be extended if they are, let's say, above grade level. So, one of the things that we've implemented this year, and I can take you back to the umbrella, and I'll call attention to this, because I think is what we, is on here, it's called UDL, or Universal Design for Learning. And really, what that is, it's a manner in which you provide access to whatever your core and your content instructional targets are in a manner that meets students where they are. And so, it allows students to basically- And so it allows students to basically, and and this is a training that we began implementing last year, and we actually used, I believe it was a half-tier day this year to train all of our teachers on UDL, which is Universal Design for Learning, to meet the needs of all their all their learners. So I'd be happy to provide you some, maybe in a Friday update, some additional information on the kind of theory behind UDL and how it meets the needs of diverse learning, because there's some specific information and lesson design structure under UDL that that allows us to do that.
I wanted to piggyback off of what Director Phillips said there, so, because I guess that was a good question, because I, is so does does MTSS look different, Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three, different for a student depending on their like, if they're highly capable, does that, does Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three look different than a student who is who is maybe struggling? Or is it just the same?
So the tiers, student needs vary, and I'll take you kinda through the rest of the presentation. Student needs vary, the tiers are there to provide supports for the varying needs that students may have in the areas of academic and behavior. So, tiers are there, all, and again, these are all the systems of support are there in place in the areas of behavior and academics based on what kids need. Kids may never need, right, you're gonna have a very small percentage of students that need a Tier Three intervention, right, because our hope is that kids get their needs met at core, Tier One instruction. So if we're not meeting the needs of, and I think it was eighty to eighty-five percent of the majority of the kids, then we have to do a better job of implementing Tier One. Right? And that goes, and that's meeting the needs of all kids, including kids that are highly capable. So how do you differentiate instruction, and and on this umbrella, it has UDL, that's a way of differentiating instruction, it's research and scientifically-based, to meet the needs of diverse learners in Tier One. We should not be meeting the needs if in Tier Three, because it's so intensive that there's no way that you could meet the needs of so many kids in Tier Three, because a lot of that is one-on-one, and it's very specially-designed instruction for the kids that absolutely need it. And so I'll talk about progress monitoring on Tier Three, and you'll understand why that's very intense for those kind of things, and SLD eligibility that I'll be gonna talk a little bit later in this presentation. That kind of answer your question. I think we'll get to some of the technical pieces of that.
So that was really rigorous, the ma- the the reading and writing for our our school kids. But are, does our math look just like that? Because, you know, isn't it, and is it of that intensity? I I was a TA once for a for a teacher, a professor that taught elementary education. And and a lot of those, a lot of elementary education teachers struggle in math. And sometimes it feels like it gets avoided, and they just focus on the reading and writing. How do we get our kid, and and I think our scores look like that right now in our district. How do we get our kids, our teachers, really involved and and with that kind of a level of, I I mean, I I, that looked like about four hours of work out of the kids' close school days. So how do you leave time in order for them to get to grasp mathematics and and have that same kind of rigor when that sometimes is what teachers kind of avoid?
So I'll I'll pause and I'll answer your math question. So the, where we are in our, and I'm sharing with you where we are in our Pasco journey, we've completed the roadmaps in K through five literacy. We would expect to begin the work on, because we had a secondary adoption, sixth through tenth grade this year. Teachers are just learning their materials, so we would begin developing some kind of roadmaps for our ELA next year. One of the things that we're doing in mathematics, and again, to Dr. Norberg's question with fidelity, that we've noticed at the elementary is we have, when we make selection of the materials, and that's part of what is really important in MTSS, is that you have a very clear delineated process in how you're selecting core materials that are aligned to the standards and are research-based. That is the case for our math materials. However, what we're finding is, is that our, we have not, we need to do a better job to assure that our teachers are teaching our math curriculum with fidelity. And the reason that I say that is that when we first purchase our materials and then we renewed midway through, because there were updates that align to the rigor standards, we haven't done as good of a job, because we've been focused on other things, of making sure, just like their literacy roadmaps, that people aren't leaving pieces out, and therefore there are gaps in student learning. So, in response to that, what we've done is we have actually partnered with Math Expressions, who is our our partners that provide the curriculum materials for our mathematics for all elementary. And what we're doing, we were actually scheduled to provide training, again, for all of our teachers, because they haven't had that in about seven years, of all the core, just like the literacy roadmaps of mathematics, where all of the rigorous standards lie in there. There's pieces within that that we know that aren't being implemented as well, like number talks. So, we were actually scheduled for next week for to have one teacher at every grade level at the elementary level to participate in that training. And then they actually called to reschedule for two more weeks because they were not able to get flights to Pasco because of all the government shutdown. So they're rescheduling with us for the end of the month to come in, and we are training all our teachers, actually, this month, on implementing the curriculum with fidelity to assure that our students don't have gaps in their learning. So, the first step in implementation is assuring fidelity of core instruction. Assure, you know, you cannot provide sufficient interventions if kids aren't getting first core instruction and access to the standards in the first place. So that's where we wanna make sure we're tightening up in mathematics before we move to Tier Two, and then we'll do something very similar with what we've done with the literacy roadmaps to duplicate that in mathematics as well. So that's a very long response to your to your question.
Well, that's great to understand a little bit of how we're going to overcome our deficit in mathematics.
Yeah, yeah. So we actually have two-day trainings, and we're training one teacher at every grade level at the end of this month as a first step in in rectifying that.
So if a class gets behind, or they they still need to go through things sequentially. I mean, is there time for them to ability to have three times so that they get caught up where they're supposed to be, or or they just move slower? How does certain classes that may not, may have struggles, how do they meet the requirements?
So I'm gonna talk to you a bit, a little bit about, I mean, later in this presentation, and about progress monitoring, universal screening, and how to know there's a difference between individual student needs and intervention and whole-class or whole-school or district work. When you say, hey, as a district, you know, we notice our students in third grade aren't understanding number sense. So is that something supplemental we need at a district level? Is it at a teacher level? Is it a school level? So I'm gonna talk to you a little bit later on in this presentation about progress monitoring and universal screening to kinda get a little bit at your question. So this is social, I'm gonna talk to you, I just gave you the academic tiers. This is the tiers for social, emotional, and behavior. So Tier One systems, data, and practices supports everyone across all settings. They establish the foundation for delivering regular, proactive supports and preventing unwanted behaviors. Tier One emphasizes modeling, teaching, and acknowledging positive social, emotional, and behavioral skills, or SEB skills. You're very familiar with that. Teams, data, consistent practices, policies, professional development, and evaluation are essential components for these practices to work effectively. The core principles guiding Tier One SEB or social-emotional behavior include the understanding that we can and should effectively teach appropriate SEB skills to all students, intervene early before unwanted behaviors escalate, use research-based, scientifically-validated interventions wherever possible, monitor student progress, and use data to make decisions. You also have the complete guide, this one, I know it's very small, but you also, I made a copy for you, and you have it in your folder. Tier One SEB practices. School-wide positive expectations and SEB skills are defined and taught. Procedures for establishing classroom expectations and routines consistent with school-wide expectations. And continuum of procedures for encouraging expected social-emotional behavior are linked to school expectations. They're used across settings and within classrooms. They're used by ninety percent or more of all school personnel. They're available to all students within the school, and they're created with ongoing input from students and families. And again, this is a continuum of procedures, and there's a continuum of procedures for discouraging unwanted behaviors. And now this is an example, the District Support Intervention Map. It's developed by the Pascal School District SEB Teams in collaboration with the University of Washington Smart Center. Okay, I know I'm giving you a lot of information, but now we're gonna talk about specific learning disability and the MTSS role in SLD eligibility. In Washington State, SLD, or Specific Learning Disability Eligibility, can be determined, and this is currently its current law and practice, it's currently can be determined by using the Severe Discrepancy Model, which compares a student's cognitive ability to their academic achievement using standardized tests. But this method is being phased out by twenty twenty-eight, twenty-nine in favor of a RTI, or Response to Intervention Model, that assesses student progress after targeting interventions. While the Severe Discrepancy Model remains an option for now, the state's regulations also allow for a comprehensive approach that combines discrepancy analysis with progress monitoring through RTI with a multi-tiered systems of support framework. To meet the requirements by twenty-eight, twenty-nine and implement RTI, we must have a fairly sophisticated MTSS system to implement it. While there's a great deal of information on this slide about RTI and SLD disability eligibility, it provides further guidance on SLD eligibility, I'd like to draw your attention to an emphasis in the importance of both universal screening and progress monitoring in this new eligibility model. I'll go into greater depth on both universal screening and progress monitoring on the next two slides. And there is a Washington Administrative Code with regards to universal screening as it relates to MTSS. And the goal is for universal screening to be systematic, conducted with fidelity, that means everyone does it in the manner that it's intended, at least three times a year, and includes a robust data analysis system, including written district decision rules that are used by school teams. The district has a procedure and checklist in place to monitor teams' implementation of screening. This is an example of our academic universal screening, and this is actually an excerpt from our MTSS handbook that I'm gonna show you and that you will have access to as well. This is actually our universal screening. Universal screening and progress monitoring will be key components of the MTSS and RTI framework that will be needed when transitioning away from the discrepancy model. Universal screening is the process of gathering academic and social-emotional SEB data about all students in a class, grade, school, or district to identify which students need additional support to meet student learning goals. Educators use universal screening data to determine the effectiveness of Tier One core instruction and identify students who need additional instruction or intervention. Leaders and teams use universal screening data to aid in program evaluation and to support resource allocation and decisions. Universal screeners are standardized, given the same format across all students, they're norm-based, compare students' performance and growth rates to their peers, criterion-referenced, identify students at risk of poor learning outcomes, and brief and accurate. They provide accurate data from five to thirty minutes of testing time. When implemented correctly, progress monitoring is a systematic, frequent, and data-driven. Instructional adjustments are made for the district-developed database decision rules to ensure maximum student growth. The district-developed schedule for progress monitoring is monitored for fidelity. An example of this, and we have, I believe, presented to you, the use of the Neil and the Earl. Those are textbook examples of progress monitoring systems that align with the framework, the MTSS framework, and can be used to effectively progress monitor student reading performance. It is also an example of why uniformity and systematic implementation are vital to progress monitoring when information is needed to support SLD eligibility. Progress monitoring is important in identifying concerns early and providing support, excuse me, in a timely manner to effectively support with Tier One and Tier Two interventions. Effective and timely progress monitoring can mean the immediate use of reteaching or small-group differentiated supports that can have significant impacts on student learning. In addition, effective progress monitoring is essential in determining if interventions are working as expected. So, to the question asked earlier, like, how do you know? So you have universal screening, which is the screening, and I gave you that example, and it's also embedded in the MTSS handbook. You have universal screening, which is norm reference, so it's not just based on Pasco, but their National Norm Reference Test of where students should be academically, and we give those in kindergarten all the way through high school in mathematics and literacy. So you have, when we have that information, not only by district, by schools, and by classrooms. So teams would be looking at that data and say, are there, do we see any characteristics? Are there any concerns or any student outliers? In addition to that, you have beyond universal screening, you have progress monitoring. So to your question, Dr. Norberg, it would depend. It's a very, I would say, the reason for the MTSS and the RTI system is that you would need to pinpoint the exact reason as to where where the support is needed. So, in the progress monitoring, if you were are seeing, and again, that's the Earl and the Niels being administered because you're following the roadmap and teachers are using the toolkit, and you notice that there's a small group of students, or maybe two or three students in a class, that aren't making adequate progress, then you would look at progress monitoring, and I'm gonna talk to you about what that might look like, to determine if the intervention they're receiving is effective. If maybe you see, i- it's a teacher that's struggling to implement, and maybe you don't have their Earl and Neil data, or kids are making slow progress, and maybe it's an instructional issue or support, then that's where we have instructional coaches. The principal might say, hey, you know, how do you need support to implement all these components? Are you implementing the the literacy roadmap or all the components with fidelity? What are your students struggling with to move on from, you know, the red emergency level to the next level? So you would be looking at specific diagnostic information and the rate of progress for students. So I would say that would be, your response would be very intentional based on what the data is telling you and where the concern may lie. So now we're gonna get into some, a little bit more technical aspects of progress monitoring and why it's important. It isn't just our kids making progress, but really, how are we analyzing the data of whether the interventions are working? And this is specific to SLD eligibility and the work that we need to do if that is something that we're considering for students within the RTI framework. So the following, and again, you also have example, I know this is very small, but I gave you examples of this that is also in your folder, and it depicts the various models for progress monitoring. So the following are three manners in which progress monitoring can take place. The reason for this is to demonstrate why the type and way we progress monitor matters, especially in the identification of students needing individualized support for special education. While these are not the only methods you can use to analyze academic progress, this describes three common options. Depending on the data, for example, in the four-point analysis in number one, if the four points are above the goal line, we should increase the goal. If all four points are below the goal line, consider adapting the intervention. If four-point data points are above or below the goal line, continue collecting data and monitor student progress.
So, Assistant Assistant President Lobo, that sounds like that's an answer to that high-kept question about what do we do when students are not being challenged, and their their points, their data points are above the goal, then we increase their goal?
Absolutely.
So the goal is not the same for every class then? The goal is just determined based on the current ability of the students?
So the goal for all students is grade-level learning standards and targets. For the students that need intervention, you have the tiers that they can access if they need those supports. Beyond that, for students that have already met the goals, you provide opportunities for them to expand their learning and move beyond those grade-level standards. But it isn't every student has their own goals, no, because the goal is the standard. So the trend line analysis is the most accurate analysis method to monitor academic progress. In this example, if at least four weeks of instruction, again, the duration, and this is where we get technical, of this is the science behind teaching, right? Is that how you progress monitor, the fidelity of implementation, the understanding and knowledge about how to progress monitor that, how to really look at interventions deeply, how to break down the how to break down the actual skills that students need to move beyond where they need, right, the, the specific areas that are holding them back, those are all very technical pieces. So we can determine the trend of a student's current performance and compare it with the goal line. In the first example, if the student's trend is steeper than the goal line, we increase the goal. And again, this is the analysis method. In the second, if the student's trend line is flatter than the goal line, consider adapting the intervention and assess fidelity. And finally, on the third, if the student's trend line and goal line are the same, keep collecting data and continue to monitor progress. The information will give us if the student is improving and on track, improving but not on track, or not improving. Okay? So this data is really critical in determining and will be SLD eligibility based on how students are responding to a research-based effective intervention and if they're growing at a pace. So for example, if you have a student who is receiving an intervention and you see that they're outpacing or they're growing very quickly, then the intervention's working, right? If you're providing a high-quality-based intervention, you're progress monitoring, a student isn't making the progress required, then you know that there's probably something else going on. The importance is, again, in looking and understanding all the tiers and fidelity of implementation of core instruction, you have to be able to rule out that students have access first to high-quality instruction they're receiving, again, all the standards that are being taught, and then if they do need some kind of intervention, that we're progress monitoring the intervention for effectiveness and also assuring that it's the appropriate intervention. So all those systems have to align. And the reason for that and the research-based interventions based on specific needs that kids need is because you wouldn't want to cast someone's arm if they have a broken leg. Not, it's not just about interventions, it's about the appropriate intervention based on the need of the student.
Going back to Doc, oh, to Dr. Norberg's question before, if the student trend is steeper than the goal line, increase the goal. To me, that seems very personal to each student, and I love that. I think it's great because then we are helping each one of our kids individually get, you know, become the best reader that they personally can be. We're helping them reach that star that they can achieve. And so it's not that, from, from what I'm seeing, it's not that all kids are reading above the goal line, it's that all kids are reading at the level that they are able to attain. Is that correct?
Kids, the goal is, and again, this progress monitoring is specific to SLD eligibility or students that need intervention. So, and the reason that this is, is, so I'm going to take the toolkits, for example. And again, this is the, the nuances of the, the toolkits, what they do is they break up a very specific skill that students need and they break it up into very small chunks that students can consume because it's intended as an intervention. If you were to only use the toolkits to teach instruction, it would take you much longer because it breaks up every skill phonemic, where all those pieces into little chunks. So not all kids need that. They get it when they're getting core instruction. The reason that you need to monitor with fidelity when kids are getting intervention because the intensity of their intervention, if you're looking at SLD eligibility, you need to know if it's working, if they're making progress, or if you can move them back to Tier One instruction. It's not intended to be there forever for students.
So this is for Tier Three instruction or Tier Two?
It can be, it can, so, the, and that's why I've actually included the graphs on there for you. There's different data analysis. The ERLA and the Aneel and what we have in School Pace, it does the data analysis for you. The computer does it for you as all, so the teacher gives the ERLA and Aneel and the computer gives you the analysis. This analysis method, the trend line analysis, would be maybe if I'm reading or like, and this is similar to what maybe a reading recovery teacher might do, is you're progress monitoring, you're looking at all those yourself. The great thing is, is that the ERLA and the Aneel, our system does it for you and monitors, and it tells you if the student is on track based on you inputting the assessment data into the system. So that's why I gave you that, so that you have time to read it and you can see. And it does say on there, one of the trend analysis is computer-generated, and that's what they recommend, and that's actually one of the tools that we have.
So are these points of data only put in for Tier Two? Or are these points of data put in for all kids?
So we have it available through School Pace for all of our students. It is a requirement under SLD eligibility, under RTI for eligibility. You have to do this if you're going to look at qualifying a student.
Starting in 2028?
Correct. But you also want to look at that if you're looking at progress monitoring on a specific intervention that you're providing. You want to know how kids are doing.
So your goal is based on the grade level for that student? But in our case, seventy percent of our kids are below grade level. And so, I guess I'm just trying to think, the goal?
So remember, so, no, because remember I shared with you earlier, and this is where the complexities of, again, the pedagogy of education becomes important. The reason that we're bringing math trainers in to train our teachers is because if you are not having enough success at Tier One, you have to go back to Tier One instruction and really focus on Tier One instruction so it is robust enough to meet the needs of eighty percent of your learners. So that's what we're doing. These literacy roadmaps were created in response to exactly what you're saying, Dr. Norberg, is that if it is not meeting the needs, how do we clearly delineate for teachers all the components, all the phonemic awareness, all of those very strong foundational skills that we know kids need, so they're not missing them? So, because you can't intervention your way for fifty percent of your kids. So it's going back to Tier One instruction and that's the work that we're currently doing. We've created the roadmaps in kindergarten through fifth grade, we'll be doing that at the secondary level next year after teachers have had the chance to implement, and we're going back to create a robust system of, of implementing with fidelity mathematics instruction with elementary this year.
Yeah, I guess a better way to say it is you can't build a house without having a strong foundation.
Exactly. Yep. And that's why it's the bottom part of the pyramid, which is the largest, because it's where your emphasis should be. So with that, because we recognize the critical importance of effective progress monitoring, we are excited to welcome back Dr. Rachel Brown-Chidste this December to work with our principals, and she was actually here for Leadership Academy on August 2025. She is a respected researcher, author, and leading expert in MTSS and RTI. She'll continue to support our district in deepening our understanding and implementation of the frameworks. In December, her focus will be on the appropriate use of universal screening data and strategies for supporting teachers in conducting progress monitoring that is both effective and efficient. So with that, through our partnership with both OSPI and the University of Washington in the Last Mile Project, our direction was to develop an MTSS handbook, where the district would not only monitor our progress towards the development of the framework and its components, but also a manner in which to communicate and organize the district's work in both academic and social, emotional, and behavioral supports. So I am going to take you through. And so, and you, again, you have the link so you can go through. One of the things that I caution you is when you open the link, it will not be formatted unless you open it in the desktop app. So you know how you always have the web version? Don't look at it in the web version, it's going to make you dizzy. So please open it in the desktop app. But I'm going to take you through just briefly so you can see all the pieces that are currently included in our handbook. And because Pasco is awesome, we really collaborate with our Anna's office and they've created all of our graphics for our handbook, handbook customizable for Pasco. And so of course, these are our wonderful students. So this is a table of contents, and it gives you an idea of where all the pieces live. An introduction and history, MTSS components. And again, some of these, all those that you can see are hyperlinks. Similarities and differences to MTSS and RTI. The purpose of the handbook. Here's that graphic, our Pasco School District MTSS umbrella. MTSS reminders. Press practices, universal screening. Evidence-based teaching at every tier. These are the academic supports that I shared with you that were embedded in the presentation. And when you, if you get a chance to go in, you'll actually see all the different things that are embedded in those tiers currently. And again, this is a draft, so we are always adding to this. Tier One materials and programs. These are Tier One Core Curriculum materials. This is where the roadmaps live. So I showed you and I shared with you kindergarten, and these are the hyperlinks to first grade, second, third, fourth, and fifth. SEL and behavior supports. Universal screening. This is academic universal screening. Screening tool, grade levels, frequency, program and use. Purpose and use, excuse me. A little about the assessments. While kids start early literacy. And then we go into the SEB or social, emotional, universal screening. The screening guide, so we screen for both behavior and social, emotional. A SEB overview. And then you see there's some work to be done. Tier Three Intensive Supports. SAT Evaluation, I'll talk to you about that just before I end. So the SAT process, and there is actually a link to that, and what it is, and that is currently in place, is anytime a teacher has a specific concern, it could be behavioral or academic for a student, they can take, they fill out the SAT packet, it's actually in our EduClimer, so all of the data is basically uploaded into a smart form, and they take it to a student assistance team. So depending on what the areas of concern, if it's behavior, you may have different people attend the meeting. Maybe your behavior intervention specialist, maybe a counselor. If it's both behavior and academics, you would have that, maybe an instructional coach, the teacher, maybe a school psychologist, the behavior intervention specialist. And you review the academic progress for the student and the progress monitoring data and all of the, their academic history. It could be state testing, it could also be universal screening. You review all of that, and then you get input from the broader team as to possibilities. And you say, hey, I need help with the student, I don't know what to do. And the team also provides support to that teacher of what they might be able to try. So it, it's a process, and that form is also embedded in there for you to review. And then in the appendices, you have all the, again, all the instructional models for dual language, the pillars. And this is on here, against, because all of this is what's tier and core instruction. You look at the different, these are all the time allocations for our dual-language classrooms at every grade level. Time allocations for L1 and L2. Anyway, so all of the things with regards to academic and behavior implementation in our K-12 system live within this MTSS handbook. I won't take you through all of it, but it's there for you to review. And then again, the student assistance team is right here. I just gave you a lot of information.
That was a lot of your, like, talking. So thank you so much for giving us all of that information. I kind of felt bad for you in the middle of the presentation, like, you've been talking for so long. The time for our study session has passed, but are there any pressing questions that the board would like to ask before we adjourn our study session?
I do have one question, and we can talk about it maybe later. I just, with dual language and core instruction, especially meeting state standards, it would be interesting just to see how that, how interventions happen in there, especially, you know, since, we can talk about that later. I just want to say thank you for the presentation, it was wonderful.
Very welcome.
Student Board Representatives, any questions?
I was just curious, you showed us a handbook, which is like really crazy and really long. But I was just wondering where would this handbook be used? Like, would it be like distributed to teachers? Is it like a resource that, that anybody in the district can have? I'm just curious, like, in what case would you need this, or how can people access it?
So it is intended for teachers to use, teachers, school psychologists, so for staff, because it's really a framework that they would be using in order to, how to provide instruction to students. Now, having said that, also on our webpage, there are some resources that are appropriate for families and those are also included if you go and you look at like academics and SEB, like even some of the dual-language components are available that are appropriate for families as well, yeah. So, so you may see some of those pieces in both places.
That's a good note to end on. So thank you so much, Assistant Superintendent Lowes, for your presentation this evening.
Thank you.
Please join us for our regular schedule.